Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to orders. Welcome everyone for coming. Thank you council. And I would like to just give the opening to Council Damian Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. When I began thinking about what to talk about for my opening, I drew a complete blank. I decided in my questionable wisdom to ask my four-year-old daughter, "What would you like daddy to talk about so you could learn?" She thought about it briefly and very matter-of-factly said, "Daddy, I want you to teach me about swimming underwater." Well, I'm sure you would all like to sit here for the next couple of minutes hearing me talk about breathing techniques, different swimming strokes, and water safety. I'll spare you that information. However, she did break down the writer's block wall with her childhood innocence and made me think of a social media post I saw earlier this week. The post said the following: "It's 2019. Get rid of Algebra II in high school and replace it with fundamentals. Teach kids about careers, not just college. Salaries, credit, budgeting, taking out a loan, investing, college debt, buying a house, and filing taxes." To that, I say, "Keep algebra in high school. Keep biology, chemistry, and calculus in the curriculum. American history in Canadian schools? Absolutely. Why not? We as parents and leaders need to stop looking at others to build our next generation up for us and do it ourselves. If we have the knowledge of taking out a loan, investing, and buying a house, share it. We need to share the knowledge we have and not hoard it in the hopes that someone else will do it for us." This is not just directed at the education system, but everywhere in our lives. We need to be the mentors to the next generation and not look to others to fill the voids. We need to be the primary educators to our children, not the schools. We need to be the ones to pass on our knowledge to the next generation and not pass the task on to others. The responsibility for the next generation lies on our shoulders and not the shoulders of institutions, organizations, and educators. And we need to take this challenge seriously. Are we not responsible for raising our own children and influencing the children in our community we come across with our knowledge of our life skills? Let the teachers teach and the parents parent. My daughter wanted me to teach her about swimming underwater. She did not ask me to bring her to the pool for swimming lessons. She didn't ask who could teach her. She knew her daddy could teach her, and that's what she wanted. We are all leaders around this table, and truthfully, so is everyone in this room. John Maxwell says, "Leadership is influence. Nothing more, nothing less." Influence is what makes a leader. Not position, not title, not salary, nor place of employment. You are all leaders in this community, but only you can choose if your influence is positive or negative. So in closing, take the time today to be a positive influence on a young person's life. Take the challenge every day to build our community up to be better than it was yesterday and influence this world one child at a time. What we choose to do can change our world, and it may be as simple as teaching a four-year-old how to swim underwater.
Thank you, Council Penner. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us. We need a motion to adopt the agenda. Counsel Susan Penner, second by Counsel Bill Hebert. Call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Okay, counsel, we have the minutes of May 7, 2019, the regular council meeting on page one. We've all had a chance to go through them. We need a motion to approve. Counsel Damian Penner, second by Counsel Dave Hebert. Any comments? Okay, nothing of counsel. Call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. It is just before 7:35, so we'll go down to 9A, which is Accounts Payable. That's in the back of the book. We've all had a chance to review. Need a motion to approve. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Siemens. Any comments? Anything of counsel? Well, then, we'll call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Okay, it is now exactly 7:35, so we will go to 6A, the public hearing. I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. This is for Bylaw 2021. It starts on page four, and we will also be taking the variance V 2019-11, which starts on page 18. Mr. Warke, could you please introduce these two files?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a public hearing for purposes to consider Bylaw 2120, which is a rezoning bylaw, and variance file V-2019-11. It's for... Both files are applicable to property with civic address of 126 Maplewood Street. The owners of the property and the applicant are Harvey and Lorraine Barkman. Purpose of Bylaw 2120 is to rezone the property from RSF (residential single-family) and RLD (residential low-density) to RMD (residential medium-density) zone. And also, the purpose of the variance file V-2019-11 is to allow an overall site width of 56 feet, whereas the RMD (residential medium-density) zone requires a minimum site width of 75 feet. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow the development of a multifamily building on the property comprised of nine residential units. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been issued. There is one piece of correspondence on file that was placed in council members' mail bins earlier today. Administration is also in receipt of a petition signed by several dozen people that are both in the gallery and not present, representing an objection to the rezoning. Counsel is able to view this document if they choose. However, we do have it here for the file. There is also correspondence on file from Manitoba Community Planning, which indicates that they have no concerns with the application. With respect to the application, it is, again, in summary, an application to consider the redevelopment of the existing property. There is currently a single-family residence on the site. Recommendation from administration is for council to give Bylaw 2120 second reading, subject to the execution of the development agreement and also subject to any information that may be provided at the public hearing. Recommendation is also that City Council approve the variance application. However, that only the public hearing be dealt with with respect to the variance and that council defer any decision on the variance until a future date.
Thank you, Mr. Warke. Is the applicant here today? Do you wish to speak? Take the podium. Your name and address, please.
Harv Barkman, New Bothell. So just, yeah, proposing apartment. We have a few other ones in Steinbeck. And especially going to the one-bedroom and the bachelor one, there is a fairly big need in Steinbeck for it, nor one at the other end is constantly full with actually a waiting list. I would have liked to do most of them in those one-bedroom or bachelor, but I guess the lot isn't quite big enough to allow more as far as parking and stuff goes. So that's why we went with two bigger units in the front and smaller units to the back. And if anybody's interested as far as pictures, as to what it'll look like, I have those here as well. Or any questions, I can try and answer them.
Any questions from counsel to the developer? Okay, Counsel Siemens?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have you talked to any people in the neighborhood regarding the proposal?
The only one... I know one of the neighbors that is, I believe, four or five houses down. He actually works together with me, and I've talked to him. He had no concerns. And the other ones, for the most part at least on Maplewood, it's all rentals that are in between. I think there's four rentals in between. And a few other ones past this gentleman's place. And then the other side, I believe for the most part is rentals too. Like, that's, I think, where that other proposal was for the other street. So I've talked to that one.
Anything... Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Barkman, thank you very much. We'll probably be calling on you later. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, or objections to this file? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for listening to our current concerns. I am Randine Weens. I live on the same block of 126 Maplewood Street. I live at 184, and I own my house. I am here to represent 56 others who signed the petition, who are not able to make it tonight with the signature stating they oppose the changing of the zoning for 126 to an allow-in apartment block. I didn't receive the letter in the mail about this meeting. I noticed it in the carillon when I was changing my birdcage. The community has not heard anything from these landlords as to their intentions of this property, except what is on... was on Steinbeck Online a month and a half or two months ago. I went around the block on Saturday night this long weekend, and I talked to the homeowners, and they were quite upset actually about this apartment coming in. One gentleman suggested he's worried about the water coming in the ditching there, that increasing. Another concern was increased traffic on our street. It's already a huge busy street. We don't need it any busier than what it is. It's already a hazard for my grandchildren when they come over. Parking, that's... Nine suites is a lot of... A lot more cars coming onto our street and parking. It's already full as it is. Many were concerned about the type of renters as per what is in there now. They are not reputable renters that are in there now. And these landlords, as my girlfriend rented a new house from them, and it took them months to come fix it. So if they're doing that to new houses, they don't take care of the ones they have. Loss of green space. The community loves our green space back there. They don't want to lose that. Depreciation of our property values with having an apartment. Would anybody else want an apartment that close to their house? I don't think so. The ones that own our houses are working hard to keep our values up. And there's several who own our houses that are also here that they find it as a huge hindrance to have an apartment block on... another apartment block on our street. And that don't take care of their property. We as a community do not want an apartment. We want to make it a residential. As you know, the zoning for the properties across the street from us are going into possibly a senior 55-plus housing. We want to keep it a family community. We do not want apartments. We do not want riffraff coming in. And we want to have a good community, and we've been working hard to get that. So that was... Those are our concerns. And we got the 56 petitioners also that signed. We thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
My name's Ingrid Friesen. I live on 111 Maplewood Street. I'm... Along with Randine, I'm agreeing with her. I've lived there for 15 years. There's been lots of construction, and it's very, very dissatisfying.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Caitlin Friesen. I live at home with my mom, and I object as well.
Shall we have the address, please, where she's?
111 Maplewood Street. Yeah, I live at home with my mom.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, come forward.
Hi, my name is Julie Ronald, 176 Maplewood. One of my concerns that I would have right now would be the size of the variance. If my calculations are correct, it's about 19 feet, which seems more than just a couple of feet. Given the fact that there's been quite a bit of concern about potential development on our street, I'm worried that if we allow this variance, I'm not sure who else is going to want a larger variance or one of the same size. Most of the lots, I'm pretty sure, are close to the same size, so there's nothing really to say who's not going to want to develop larger housing further down the street as well. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Adella Duick, 547 Ryanair East. I was actually quite pleased to hear that Steinbeck is actually putting out bachelor apartments and one-bedroom apartments for homeless people and young people who are starting on their own. That it's a good... Would be good education for them to start out on their own on bachelor or one-bedroom apartments or whatever. I mean, I've lived in Steinbeck for over 35 years, and I've, like, I think they need... I actually talked to a homeless person, and he was saying that the, you know, like, he had construction, worked in construction, and the government took every penny for the first six months, like, as a single person without kids. And this is the first time I've heard somebody, a developer, actually wanting to put out bachelor and one-bedroom apartments. And I think they need the dignity of not living in a mold... In a mold or safety hazard place, as a fire commissioner said in Steinbeck, there were a lot of places that are not safe for individuals to live in. So... And even seniors, there are some single seniors that can't afford to pay high maintenance of condo fees and all that kind of stuff. So it would suit a variety of people in that sense. So, thanks.
So you're speaking in favor of this?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to... Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Willie Clausen, and I own the house right beside where he wants to develop it. And when I purchased the house, it was because it was open, backed into a big park, lots of kids running around there. And with all these... I have a three-year-old daughter, so with more traffic going there and through, back and forth, and with the 55-plus coming in, I'm just... I object because there's lots of construction there, and it's going to depreciate my house. And I really wasn't planning on having a huge wall beside me because my house is, like, right beside it. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Mr. Barkman, would you like to answer some of these?
Okay, I guess the last one is easiest to remember. As far as a wall, there won't be a wall. The building's behind. Like, it's right at the back of the yard, so there'll be no wall in front of that. Like, it'll be parking up front. What other questions were the concerns?
Sorry, I wasn't sure... In relation to the parking, are you going to have parking for each suite plus visitor parking?
Yeah, it's actually a requirement for the city.
Excuse me. All questions need to be directed through me. So that's... So you... Yeah, parking, actually parking, required parking is correct on the plan. So there... He has enough parking allowed for what his units need. So the parking should not spill onto the street.
Also, the lot width is different on that lot. As you... It's gone, but it's 55 up front, and the back three-quarters of it is 65, so we're only 10 feet different, too.
You know what? I can... I can kind of... I've made some notes. I can give you some of their complaints. They are... They're worried that the park is going to be gone.
The park's not going to be gone because the park is not part of my property. The 126 Maplewood was the only lot that actually goes from the street all the way to the back, so it's a longer lot than all the rest. So the rest of the lots are like half that size, so I don't think you'd put up an apartment on the rest of those lots because they're only half the size. This one is... I would think this is a unique lot because it goes right through. And as far as kids and stuff, I mean, I think it's ideal because there's a park right there for the kids to play. They don't have to play on the street. And it's already... There's, as far as looks-wise, you're already seeing a massive apartment on Low and Boulevard that's right beside it. So I don't think that's really going to change the... In my mind, it's going to look a whole lot better than the house that's there right now.
They... I guess there was some comments about renters not being reputable, taking a long time to fix things.
That is, in my mind, that's not true. Every... There's always a priority, right? If it's a fridge, if it's a water leak or something that's going to cause a flood, that's priority. That gets done within two days. If it's something that can wait, if it's a light bulb or a light fixture, obviously that's not going to be as high a priority. Rent... If... Yeah, whatever. I don't know what else I can say to that. We do look after our properties.
There were concerns about drainage. I don't know if that would be a question better asked by our city planner.
Yeah, I think that's not my property, drainage. My proposal there, if I can add something, would be, and I know I talked to the city about it already, would be to close that up, to actually put a culvert there and cover it up. You could use it as a sidewalk rather than having a little bit of water always standing there for mice, or not mice, for mosquito fest. So my proposal would be to close that up if something goes through here.
Yeah, traffic, parking. Parking you took care of, the green space. 55-plus houses... 55-plus housing, we have no control over that. We don't even know if that's happening yet.
I haven't even heard about that.
Yeah, we don't know nothing about that. Okay, then I guess you've pretty much... That's pretty much all the complaints or the objections. Do you have any... Pardon? You have to take the podium, sir.
Because I live right beside it, I see the kind of people that live there. And at the moment, if any one of you would go into the backyard, you would immediately hire someone to get the whole backyard cleaned up. It is an absolute disaster. And I have been in the bachelor suite in the back. It is even worse. Like, I wouldn't even... It's terrible. People that live in there are... Yeah, substance abuse issues. And, yeah. The whole backyard is just cluttered and stuff.
Can I just ask a question to you then?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
So, just to clarify, like, you're talking about the people who are in the house now?
Yes.
So if we reject this, are you... It's because you're opposing the rezoning. Are you saying then that you want it to continue as it is now? But you're issuing a complaint regarding the type of property it is now? I'm just a little confused as to what you're saying here.
No, I'm saying as to the type of people that are let into it. And if that's only one family house, if there's nine more with the same type of people in it, what kind of neighborhood would that turn it into? Thank you.
Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Barkman?
People are all not the same. The one reason in my mind why, I guess, and the apartment that's there right now is a lower-end apartment. It's old. It needs to be renovated. But if you don't get renters into a place like that that look after it, then what's the point of spending money on it? So I'm going to build a new one. And in my mind, in... With past experience, we have 80-some suites that we keep full. And we have had no issues other than with these last two tenants that moved into this particular apartment, we have had issues. You can talk to some of those two people, and they will be the nicest people when you want to go and rent to them, and they will change on you on a dime. We've rented properties for 30... Over 30 years, and you try and read them the best you can, but sometimes they'll put on such a good front that I don't... I don't know how good... How you can read that. You can't... You try so hard to read it, but you can't. And so, in my mind, a new facility is going to attract, if you want to call it better renters. I don't know if that's the right term or not, but...
Counsel Hebert has a question for you.
Mr. Mayor, the question I have is, how long have you owned this property?
This particular one would be, I want to say, 15 years probably. Yeah.
Counsel...
Administration?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm wondering how this is going to impact the home street drainage situation? Is it going to be positive, make it worse, or keep it the same?
Drainage requirements, whenever there is development, is every developer must manage all water that is generated on-site. And the rules that both the city and the province follow when there is development is the drainage from a building site cannot be any greater or more rapid than what was the case prior to development.
So it'll be the same, basically? It's not going to make it worse?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Barkman, do you have anything to say in closing? Okay, then at this time, I will close the public hearing and open the council meeting. Okay, counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra?
I'll make the motion to approve the rezoning.
To approve? Do we have a second? Counsel Siemens. Okay, go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying, this has not been my favorite public hearing. I don't think the presentation was spectacular, and I have concerns with the tone of some of the objections. So on both ends, I'm not thrilled. But what's before us is the question of the rezoning and whether it's appropriate for this particular property. So it's currently zoned RSF and RLD, so there's... And then the request is to change it to medium-density. In this case, we're talking about having nine units that would be there. And I think when you consider that nearby, you have a significant number of apartments already in the area, when you consider that this is a unique lot in terms of its size and the depth that it goes in, and you consider that nine units is not... In terms of the scale of apartments that we deal with is actually very much in the low end. We've had previous applications in this area for... And which, there was one that we objected, which had a much bigger impact. This year, we're talking about nine extra units. And replacing a house, you know, a facility which really shouldn't be there now with a new facility, I think there's some potential for improvement. Just in regards to some of the objections that were raised, things such as the drainage and parking, and those are things that are dealt with in, you know, in the development agreement and through following city zoning bylaws. And so drainage is, as has been explained before, third reading is given and before any construction can happen, the developer has to get a development agreement signed. And that development agreement specifies exactly how the drainage should be set up so that there is no negative impact on the neighborhood. As far as the issue of traffic, yes, when you have nine extra units, there would be a few extra cars there. But that is an objection that you could raise to any increase in density. And in order to use that objection here, basically, we have to accept the premise that along Maplewood Street, we'll never support any increase in density anywhere there for any reason at all, if you're going to use the traffic argument. Because any increase in density, of course, there's going to be some increase in traffic. But I think we recognize that in some of our... In some neighborhoods, there is going to be an increase in density. I should point out that the city, in addition to our usual development agreement, we do have an infill policy that will apply in this case, that before construction can go ahead. Because it's infill within an existing neighborhood, this has to be in compliance with that. There is an additional review that city staff do to make sure that this is going to fit into the neighborhood. And again, because we're talking about only nine units, that should not be overly difficult to do. We're not talking about a three-story building that's going to tower over. We're talking about nine units here. And I just have to say that, you know, as far as the issue of that they're going to be apartments and therefore they're going to be people renting there, I don't know if there's anyone in this room that didn't start out by renting somewhere. I started out in an apartment. I wasn't riffraff when I rented. Not everyone who rents an apartment is riffraff. And I think we need to recognize that there is a need for places where we have apartments throughout the city. There are, you know, throughout the city, we have areas where we have apartments and such. And so to just assume that because in one place where there's renting, that there's a poor renter, that therefore, when you have nine units where it's going to expand to nine bad renters, that doesn't logically follow. That it just simply doesn't. And I don't think we want to declare that Steinbeck is a place where we don't want renters. That is not a message that I want to send. So I will say that I wish, and I will say this for, you know, future applications, it is far better when the developer takes the time to meet with the neighborhood in advance of this hearing. Because even in terms of some of the concerns regarding parking, you know... parking, you know, that was, the applicant was able to explain that pretty quickly, about we'll have enough parking because we're gonna follow the city bylaws, some things like that would be a lot less contentious if the developer took the time to proactively speak with people in the neighborhood, and that means taking some time to actually go and doing that. And I, I really wish that had been done in this case, because I think that could have alleviated at least some of the intensity of some of the concerns. And so, that made me pause significantly in terms of whether I'm gonna go ahead with, with making this motion, but ultimately, even though I wish that had been done, at the end of the day, I look at the property in question, I look at the actual change that's gonna happen, and I believe that on the whole, this would be more positive than negative, so therefore, I'm making the motion to do the rezoning.
Thank you, Counselor Swiestra. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what I can add to that, but to me, the Maplewood Street, and I drive down that street frequently, as I live in that area, is the fact that that neighborhood is changing, it's, it is evolving, over the next twenty years, there's going to be many different, I would assume that there's gonna be many of the housing's gonna change in that area because it's needed. And we heard that through past people asking to build on the, on the east side of Maplewood. So there, there is, I think that neighborhood is in transition. I think this particular lot too, is it's, it's an odd-shaped lot that does flow back substantially further than the other lots. To me, changing out that house to a new design with a new construction in an apartment, I think that makes sense to me. The parking will solve itself because of our development plan that, that the developer will have to sign off on. I agree, Maplewood is a busy street, it's a shortcut from our number twelve, but I don't know how denying this will solve that issue. Not all the traffic that is on Maplewood comes from Maplewood, a lot of it is through traffic, and people don't all get up at the same time and leave at the same time, or arrive home at the same time, so traffic concerns are, there's many in our community, but I don't think the traffic concerns are, would be any worse with this apartment lot going in. So overall, I think it would, it'll be an improvement in the neighborhood, it is right close by all the other apartments there, but it makes sense to me that, that we approve this.
Anything further of counsel? Counselor Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's not much that I can add, other than to say, today I was at this, this property in question, and I, I parked in the parking lot of a large, three-story apartment complex that's right beside this, and it's important to remember that we are focusing right now on whether we are rezoning this to medium density, or if we are gonna keep it a residential single-family. So that is the scope of what we're voting on right now, and to say that it isn't, doesn't fit in the community right now, I feel is inappropriate, I feel this is a good, good use for this property, it is right beside current, current apartment complex, and it's a good, a good option for transitioning this, this neighborhood, as Counselor Siemens alluded to, and so I'll be supporting this motion.
Counselor Hebert?
Two things, I wonder if we could see the petition?
Any, uh...
And then I have a comment, if I could.
Yes, you can see the petition.
I could just have thirty seconds, or less.
Okay.
I'm just interested in how many people signed it on Maplewood, and how many are in the streets on, on either side. Notice there's quite a few on Stonebridge Crossing. Looks to me like there's only two or three on Maplewood that signed it, so those are my thoughts. Uh, I have a couple of thoughts, and I'd just like to reiterate what Counselor Swiestra said, and also Counselor Siemens, there are apartments next to it, and so it's not like we're changing the whole area, it's, there's a lot of, Counselor Penner as well, you know, I walk by there every other day or so, going for my walks, and I know the area well, and it borders onto all those apartments, so, uh, that speaks in favor of the petitioner. And the other thing is, when we're talking cars, we're talking nine suites, but there's two or three cars there now, because of the number there, so we're really only talking five or six or more cars, so it's not a huge impact on traffic, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further, oh, Counselor Hebert?
I would like to add, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that I live in that area as well, just down the street from me, I have over a hundred apartments, but they're clean, they're well taken care of, I don't have an issue with traffic, I know Maplewood needs cleaning up, in my opinion, so for that reason, I will vote for rezoning.
Thank you. Okay. Well, counsel, yeah, this is, I, I do believe too, this area is going through a transition, and, and I believe this is a, a good next step, uh, we've got three, four stories in front of it, facing Lombeul Boulevard, and then this will be two stories back into single-family dwelling. I think it, it's, it's natural, and I think you want to have that kind of transition, so you're not single-family dwelling right beside something that is three, four stories high. In my personal, in my personal home, we've got four stories right behind us, there's no transition, there's no, no real buffer, other than the trees, and it works well, works very, very well, we've got, we have no problems. Matter of fact, as they go, as the residents go for walks, we talk, we, I got, you know, whatever, thirty-two, sixty-four units, they're all my friends, it's all good. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this too, the counsel, as, as our areas and our neighborhoods change, we need to change with them too, and I think this is, this is something that, uh, we're gonna be getting rid of a, a property that is older, it's getting run down, now there'll be a new property there, that will attract new people, and it'll be a different demographic, because there's gonna be six units where they're gonna be bachelors or single people. So I think, I think it's gonna be a nice demographic for the area, and for that reason, I will, I'll vote in favor. So we'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, counsel. So we are just taking care of the second reading, the third reading on the rezoning will be taken care of after the execution of a development agreement with the developer, and the variance will be voted on after, at a different time, once the, we've had third reading on the, on the zoning, okay? So now we'll be moving on to item seven, which is our delegation, citizens on patrol.
They're coming.
They're coming? Okay.
Yeah. Helen, you should come over here. Just, okay, we're complete now.
Okay.
Yeah. You guys can sit down. Go ahead and have a seat.
Have a seat.
Okay, we'd like to, we'd like to welcome citizens on patrol, um, they are, they're our delegation today, they're gonna tell us what they've been doing in our community. So, Walter, are you starting?
Yeah.
Okay, Walter, take the podium.
Good evening, and welcome to the new yellow vest movement. Little bit different, COPP stands for Citizens on Patrol Program, that's a Canadian volunteer organization, uh, that is dedicated to developing or maintaining safety in, in our cities. I've lived here in Steinbeck now for ten years with my family, and love calling Steinbeck our home, and it's a safe place to be, and we believe that it should stay that way. So, we are here together as a team, part of the team, Citizens on Patrol, and we function as the extended ears and eyes of the local RCMP detachment, we work very closely together with the detachment. Uh, one of the RCMP officers, sometimes even to attend our, our monthly meetings, and when I talk about "we," that's us here with the caps and the t-shirts this evening. At this time, I wanna ask some of them to hand out brochures to each one of you sitting here this evening, if you guys can do that. One is a more generic brochure, and the other is a more local brochure describing our work here. Our request is, if you can't volunteer yourself, and we sort of assume that you're pretty busy people, at least counsel, and maybe some of the other people sitting here as well, maybe you could pass the brochures on to somebody that might have time and interest to join this volunteer organization. We're definitely looking for more volunteers, more about that later. I myself have been a part of COP now for three years, really enjoying it, but some on the team have been doing it much longer, and so I'm gonna interview two of them, uh, one that's been longer, one that's been shorter than me on the COP team. We'll start with Helen Penner. Helen, could you tell the people here, how long you've been a member of COP?
Well, the group started in two thousand and eight, and I joined shortly after, early two thousand and nine, so that's ten years.
So do you remember how and why you joined COP originally?
Well, my friend, uh, had joined, so she asked me if I wanted to join her too, and I thought it was a good idea, so I went to a meeting, and I liked what they were doing, so.
Mm-hmm, and we're gonna go a little bit more into the work in the next interview, but many of our shifts that we do are sometimes a little bit monotonous, right?
Yes.
Uh, but monotonous can mean that nothing's happening in the city, which in this case is actually a good thing, right? Uh, what keeps you going, even in some of those more monotonous times or shifts that we have?
Well, I know we can't be everywhere, um, but in doing a shift, I'm hoping that we can come across something, or at least be aware of stuff that's going on in the city. Um, if so, we call the RCMP and let them know, and I just, I think it's a good thing to do.
Good. Uh, one last question for you, do you have an interesting story from one of your COP shifts?
You know, when we first started, there was more, there was more incidents that we came across, and I've seen over the past years that those have kind of, they're not the same kind of incidents, we don't see so much now, but just, if I go back a couple of times, or a couple of years, um, I don't know if anybody heard the story before, but we, we caught up to our mayor, walking in the back lane one late night, and he was a little nervous, we didn't know who he was at the time, so we kind of just kept an eye on him, and drove off a different lane, and came back, and he was gone. And he told us later that he had been so nervous, he had hid behind a dumpster. But anyway, we made sure he got home safely. A few other things are, we've had, um, there used to be dumpster fires and stuff like that, which isn't happening anymore, uh, we've had a few people with dementia that we found and actually helped them home, one lady into Cleveland, she was totally lost, she thought she was in Winnipeg, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
Yeah.
And then I'll ask Eddie to step to the microphone, Eddie Noel, he's not just only a real estate agent and a soccer fan, of the wrong German soccer team, I might add, um, but we can discuss that a different time. Uh, he's our most recent addition, uh, he's been at it eighteen months, two years almost?
Yeah, going on two years, full-time.
Going on two years. Why did you join COP, Eddie?
Uh, I don't know, I thought, I thought it would be something good, I've chosen Steinbeck as a city I wanna raise my kids in, and I want Steinbeck to be as, a good city, as good as it can be, and just trying to do my part.
So what happens on a typical shift? From when to when are we driving? Uh, what do you actually do?
Well, fortunately with me, my kids are smaller, so they go to bed probably between eight and nine, and we start our shifts generally after that, so I don't miss any of the time with my kids, I put them to bed, and then we go on a shift, but we generally drive around the city, we patrol public places, churches, parking lots, businesses, residential areas, basically drive around, we've got deckles for our cars, and although some nights might be slower, boring, or may not see anything, we might still be seen by somebody who might think twice about doing something, because they know that somebody's driving around, looking out for them.
And I must say, we have great conversations, think of it, you're driving for three or four hours, not much happening, uh, so you have a lot of conversation going on, and get to know each other a fair bit that way too. Um, you have an interesting story from one of your shifts?
Um, I mean, I haven't been on it for that long, and like mentioned before, most of the nights are quiet, but yeah, we've, we've followed, we've followed cars through several neighborhoods that seemed suspicious, that went from one business to the next, um, we did call in the RCMP on them too, turned out it was Steinbeck Security, but they were driving around without their deckles, which they shouldn't, so, uh, things do happen, and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good thing to do.
Yeah. I will just add one story myself, you stay here, I've got a couple more questions I have to ask you. Uh, we were patrolling behind the Donair Grill Express, just across the street from here, uh, one evening, and we saw some young men crawling up or down the ladders, there were three of them, and so we stopped, and they quickly crawled down, and they quickly ran for, we're not allowed to intervene, of course, but we called the police, and then next week, we also went to the owners of the Donair Grill Express, and told them they should maybe check up on the roof and see if there's any damage that has been done up there. Those kinds of things happen on occasion. Now, we are looking for more volunteers, aren't we, Eddie?
Yes, and it is, it's not very time-consuming what we do, we basically, we meet once a month, just to discuss ongoing issues or anything that any of us are aware, and then generally, we go out on about two, two shifts a month, shifts last somewhere between three, four hours, we usually start at eight, nine o'clock, and then go about until eleven or midnight, some of us go out during the day, um, but yeah, it's not very time-consuming, and if everybody would give a little bit, then it wouldn't be as much for everybody.
Uh, tell them about some of the stuff we also do for MPI.
Um, we'll do, well, we had one scheduled, we do speed watches, we do, uh, cellphone checks, um, seatbelt checks, basically, once or twice a year, we'll, we'll pick busy intersections, we'll sit there, and we'll just do counts as far as how many people do wear their seatbelt, seatbelts, or don't wear their seatbelts, um, people that are on the cellphones, and we basically report those back to MPI, RCMP.
Yeah, that's, my question's for you, um, so some of the other people are sitting here, you see, we're not, uh, complete here this evening, but we do need some more volunteers, and at this point, we also want to acknowledge the city's help, um, our fuel costs do get reimbursed by the city, and some of the local restaurants, they give us gift cards, so we can buy coffee while we're on shift, so we want to acknowledge that as well. Final thing we want to mention is that we are doing a barbecue fundraiser, uh, at the mall, on Saturday, June twenty-second, from eleven AM to two PM. Welcome anybody to come for that, hot dogs and a drink for a toonie, something like that, um, come support us as we help keep Steinbeck a safe and great place to live. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, thank you for what you do in our community, and keeping, helping keeping our community safe, and I, I really believe you're effective, uh, I know in the story you told, I, I wasn't the mayor that was hiding behind a dumpster, because, well, it's harder for me to hide, but I do, I do often see the, the vehicles as I'm going for my late-night smokehouse runs, and sometimes you guys stop, and we, we talk on the parking lot, and I, I always, I walk away from that always feeling a little bit safer, because someone else is watching out for me. So I really appreciate what you do, and, and on behalf of the city, on behalf of, of city council, we just wanna say a big thank you, and, um, thank you for giving us... And, um, thank you for giving us something to do. That's a Saturday, or is that?
Yep.
Saturday, June 27th?
Uh, 23rd.
Uh, 23rd.
22nd.
22nd. Yeah, 22nd.
27th. Okay, I was right.
22nd?
22.
22nd.
11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay, June 22nd, okay. So I encourage too, all of councils to come out, have a hot dog, and, uh, and support a worthy cause. And, um, yeah, and I guess the, the big call out too is, is you're looking for volunteers, and that is, that is, that's a great thing. Um, we have a very good volunteer base in this community, and, and we wish you, uh, great luck in, in finding, uh, finding volunteers. Okay? Any questions of council? Go ahead, the council.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I'll just start off by briefly echoing how much we appreciate the work you guys do. It's, uh, it makes a difference, and we, COPP's been around since 2008, and we're so glad to see you guys continuing on, uh, the program. If I could just ask a question, just because we're talking about recruitment and new people joining, could you just talk for just a little bit about, so let's say someone were to phone you and to say, "I want to sign up, I want to participate." What type of training or induction or like, what would sort of, what would happen if they say, "I want to sign up, I want to join"? Um, do they just get put on a shift right away? Do they go to a session first? Could you perhaps comment on that?
I think they would come here first and get an application form, then they have to go through the RCMP to get their criminal check done, and then we take over and train them. Um, usually two of us go out and train them a couple of shifts and put them on with somebody.
So, if I could just follow up. So what you're saying then, if someone wants to join, it's not like they're just going to be out patrolling by themselves. You guys go in pairs, and a new person would be, would be for the first of all, be paired with two experienced people, and...
Yeah.
So there's no need to be afraid of, uh, you know, of, of being thrown out, being out there before you're ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything further? Any other questions? Okay, uh, yeah, Counselor Heber?
Mr. Mayor, just wondering how many volunteers are there presently, and how many, what's the maximum they're looking for?
Currently, I believe we are, if we count everybody, nine. Uh, one just moved to Winnipeg, and, uh, one spends a summer out in Ontario. Um, so we could max out easily at 20, right? Uh, we could be doubling our numbers, uh, if things would go well, because there's a lot of evenings of the week that we're just not covering right now, and it would be good if, uh, we could cover basically most evenings of the week. But, uh, in, in light of, uh, that, we focus most of our energy on the weekends, uh, which seem to create a little more action in the city here than, uh, other times.
Anything further? Okay, then, well, we really thank you. I just want to say again, thank you on behalf of City Hall, or City Council, and, and the city of Steinbach for what you do for us, and, uh, keep up the good work, and we hope you get those recruits you're looking for.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us time.
Okay, council, there are no reports on foundations of city manager, so we will go, uh, directly to 9B, the financial statements ending in April 30th, 2019. That's at the back of the book. We've all had an opportunity to, uh, to look them over. Can I have a motion to approve? Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Siemens?
No comments.
No comments? Okay, call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, on page 31, we have the business license. Uh, council, we need a motion to approve the business license. Counselor Damian Penner, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Uh, any comments?
Nope.
Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. On page 32, well, once again, this year, we have to appoint the weed inspector for 2019. So we have a motion, uh, on page 32 to, uh, to be resolved that Trevor Schaumburg, community service officer, be appointed as City of Steinbach Weed Inspector for 2019. Motion to approve? Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Swiestra. Any comments?
No, I believe he's done the job for the last number of years.
Any further?
He covered it all. Can't have anything.
Nothing in closing, sir? Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. 9E, we have the Building Sustainable Communities Program, uh, the, um, the grant application for the T.G. Smith Center. This is for, uh, applying for a grant for up to $38,650 for the purpose of replacing the ice plant chiller at the T.G. Smith. Yes, uh, sorry, Mr. Workinkey, yes.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, uh, there has been an update for both those applications. Uh, the actual application documents would have been in council's, uh, mail bins earlier today.
Yep.
Just to provide some backup, uh, for this particular item and the, uh, item on the next page, the resolution for a second grant, uh, request. Uh, the grant amounts have actually been updated, uh, and I just wanted to advise you that the, uh, on page 33, uh, the grant application for the ice plant chiller will now be increased to $39,606. And the application for the upgrades to the Steinbach Aquatic Center be increased to $25,722.37.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workinkey. Okay, council, so, uh, the, uh, well, that changes everything. We, yeah. We're still looking for a motion to approve for the new number, $39,606. Uh, Counselor Susan Penner, second by Counselor Bill Hebert. Any comments?
No.
Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, um, so now we got 9F. Read the, uh, again, the Building Sustainable Communities Program for the Steinbach Aquatic Center. It's the grant application for $25,722. Uh, I need motion to approve. Counselor Penner, second by Counselor Swiestra. Any comments?
Counselor.
Well, we'll go right into the question. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, we go to number 10, council question period. Is there any questions of council? Okay, seeing none, we will go to number 11A, Correspondence and Petitions, that is St. Fear Felice, read the frog follies, July 11th to 14th, on page 35. Counsel, would you like to, uh, to proceed on that? Take his information? Okay? If we go to 9, 9B, we've got Junior Achievement Manitoba Program, Request for Funding, that's on page, starts on page 36. Uh, council, would you like to proceed? Take his information? Okay? And we've got the Kid Store, uh, Kid Sport Manitoba, the South Region, Request for Funding. That starts on page 77. Uh, how would you like to proceed? If that's...
I'll ask Mr. Mayor, that's Penner's, uh, decision whether that gets, uh, grant funding up. So I would recommend that we leave it in your hands, but...
Okay. Then that's, uh, that is the direction we'll go. We'll leave it in, we'll leave it in the mayor's hands for that. Okay? And, uh, other business? Brings us to 13, adjournment. I need, uh, okay, motion, Counselor Penner, Counselor Hebert? No comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, June 4th, 2019, at 7:30. Thank you.